Is that right?
I'm going to friend.
Good evening, everyone.
And that's exactly.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the WAPC meeting of the twenty fifth of June twenty twenty five. I'd like to welcome all of you who are joining us in person today. And we did start a little bit later than planned today, so thanks for your patience and also welcome to those online. Members will refer to technical devices throughout the meeting system in considering the information before them. And I'd like to start by acknowledging the Wadja people of the Nganarang nation, our respects to elders past and present. In terms of apologies and leave of absence, we do have Commissioner Brooks on leave. As we are all accounted for today and welcome Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Adeyemi online to the meeting. So we will go to. Yes, and I do have a here today. In relation to three point one on the lifting of urban deferment for the Eastwarrer DSP precinct seven, eight and part of fifteen. Commissioner Bennett has declared an indirect pecuniary interest in that Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts for impacted developers on other projects. And on the same item, Commissioner Heron has declared an indirect pecuniary interest in that Commissioner Heron's employer, Erbus, acts on behalf of the Squasini Estate, Ngansland in cell fifteen. Understand Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Heron that you're not seeking to participate in this item. Thank you. And in relation to item four point three, the Priority Corridor Working Group update, Commissioner Bennett has declared an actual impartiality interest in that Commissioner Bennett's employer, CLE, acts on projects considered by the Priority Corridor Working Group. And Commissioner Bennett has stated that she will remove herself from the meeting. Thank you. And in relation to item four point four, the proposed joint EPA WAPC guidelines on DSPs, Commissioner Bennett has declared an perceived impartiality interest as a member of EPA and has previously considered this item. Members, I'm very happy for Commissioner Bennett to remain. There's a joint guidelines between these two areas of the A P C. But is there any dissent to that?
The glue.
Thank you. You wouldn't be serving your purpose if you were not.
Thank you.
Thank you. On disclosures of representation, I will make one in relation to item three point one in that I have met with proponents and consultant teams on this item in the normal course of my duties as chair and have not had any additional that which has not been provided to other members. Commissioner Lake, you put your hand up.
Yes, I think in terms of item three point one, the little tinny road deferment. I think previously I made a representation as my role as Chair of the PCWG. And I haven't declared it, but it's the same one in terms of representation.
Yes.
So I don't have any more information anymore than.
Yeah.
Anybody else, but I think it's probably worth noting.
Yes, thank you. We will note that in the agenda. Thank you very much. Anything further, Commissioner Sandry?
Thank you. I do apologize since we're late form, but just on the WAPC committee minutes. Town planning is mentioned in the minutes and I was a previous shareholder of the firm. No decision is being made other than noting the minutes and there is no detail within the minutes in relation to the company's matter. And I seek to stay in the room under an impartiality search.
I'm comfortable with that. Is there any dissent? Thank you. That's fine.
Just in relation to item three, I perceived impartiality. This general manager of Stockland is called that and is known to me and my family. I have declared that previously as well. And then also in relation to item four point eight on today's agenda, I perceived impartiality. As I know, the city of Stirling is in relation to a particular site, however, I've had no.
So no decision making required. Okay, on those two matters, we've previously dealt with your declaration on item three point one in other matters and we've been comfortable for you to stay. Don't see there being any change. And on the other matter, yes, thank you for that, that to be an impartiality interest. Is there says any dissent? Thank you very much. Members, are there any other declarations of interest or disclosures of representation? Thank you very much. Confirmation of the previous minutes of Wednesday, the twenty eighth of May twenty twenty five. Members, are there any issues that you wish to raise in relation to those minutes? Happy to move and second moved by Commissioner Heron, seconded by Commissioner Shears. Is there any dissent? Thank you. They are carried. So deputations and presentations, Sam, I'll hand over to you. Thank you very much.
Good morning to all those present in order to make deputation to the Western Australian Planning Commission this morning, either in person or via Zoom. You will be invited to join the table or promoted to a panelist via Zoom to deliver your deputation this morning. You have been advised of your allocated time, which will be managed by a timer, which will appear on the screen, which will count down that time. If you do have a PowerPoint presentation this morning, this will be shared on the screen throughout your deputation and your advisors you wish to advance this. So moving to the first deputation on the agenda this morning, on item three point one, the lifting of urban deferment at East Bonnaroo District Structure Plan, District Structure Plan precinct seven, eight and part of precinct fifteen. We're welcoming Rod Dixon, Grant Shepard, Robin Hitchen and Holly White to join us. Thank you.
That's for transparency for all. Everyone that has a deputation today has been given six minutes.
Hopefully we don't need to.
So we could say who can get it done.
Did challenge, challenge except.
Punch.
Thanks. I'll give you extra time.
No, no trading between deputations.
Thank you very much for your time today and I appreciate the opportunity to provide a deputation. Just by way of introduction, my name's Grant Shepard. I'm the Residential Director at Aspiria, supported by Rod Dixon and Robin Hitchen from Row Group and Holly White, who's the Development Manager from Aspiria on this project. As a starting point, we wanted to just say that we're supportive of the department's recommendation to proceed with lifting a firm into firm over precinct seven, eight and part of fifteen. Hasperia's been involved in precinct seven since late twenty twenty and has taken a lead in driving the preparation of the local structure plan and the subsequent planning approvals like the lifting of firm into third. Precinct seven is highly fragmented and has over a hundred individual landowners and of which we account for circa twenty seven percent of that. So whilst we are driving it, we are taking into account a lot of landowners that, you know, are not under our control. And that's been a challenge. That's the fragmentation has been a significant challenge. But we're really pleased to and excited to be here where we are and with the opportunity to deliver critical housing to the WA market. Our vision for precinct seven is to create a sustainable residential community which has nature, tree retention and sustainability at the forefront of the design. And before I hand over to Rod to provide a bit more specific comments about the planning aspects, I just wanted to thank Anthony Mascara, Matt Selby and the wider DPLH team for working really collaboratively with ourselves and also the wider, the two other developers for on this matter as well as the structure plan. I don't think that we could have been in this position without that collaborative approach. So really do appreciate that. So now hand over.
All right, thanks. If we could move to the next slide, please. All right, thanks for your time. I'm going to take you through a few very brief messages. I don't want to duplicate things here. There's a lot covered in the report that we're both supportive of and appreciative of the commentary in it. So key messages for you, I guess, the land is identified. Not only is it identified in the framework, but it's identified for short term development, twenty fifteen to thirty one. So the fact that we're here today totally coincides with that. The second thing to say to you, the report outlines that the lifting of urban deferment guidelines are fully addressed through this. We are lucky to have local structure plan that's been substantially progressed, provides the necessary detail to not only address the lifting requirements, but inform the commission's decision making today. We need the urban zoning supported today by you, together with concurrent local scheme zoning in order to give the head of power for its structure plan to be subsequently adopted if considered acceptable. Next slide, please. So you can see precinct sevens generally south of Lake Marigina relates to about two hundred and thirty six hectares of the four ninety six hectares subject to this lifting report today. So about forty seven point five percent. And as Grant said, fairly fragmented area, but a lot of work to collaborate as to where we are today. Next slide, please. We've included this copy of the local structure plan as it currently sits just to demonstrate the amount of coordination and planning certainty that we have before us, that structure plans with the department for consideration at the moment. Just working through the finer details. So we have a situation where the city of Waneroo and other agencies are supportive, not only of the lifting, but they have supported the local structure plan as well. Next slide. That's it really. Look, I just want to leave with you the comment that East Waneroo's been identified as the major growth area of some fifty thousand homes for the North West Corridor. Really keen to see the commission support this first step, seeing that being realized. Thank you.
I've gone very much for that timely deputation. Members, over to you for questions. Questions? Thank you very much for your deputation today.
Excellent.
Deputation also on item three point one is on relation to precinct eight and we welcome Rod Dixon, Rod Gardner, Green.
Well, come.
Thank you. By way of introduction, my name's Rod Gardner. I'm a director with Cube Property Group, Rod Dixon. And Chris Grand also from Row Group. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in favour of agenda item three point one on behalf of all of the precinct date landowners. Cube Property Group turns thirty years old next week. And for that thirty years, we've been developing well considered, high quality land estates throughout WA. As a major landowner in precinct date, Cube has led the urban deferment lifting request and the preparation of the local structure plan on behalf of, and more importantly, in full cooperation with the precinct date landowners. Like precinct seven, it's reasonably fragmented, but there is a fair bit of consolidation among ourselves and other developers in the precinct. Precinct date is identified as a stage one frontal development, has access to all essential services and is a logical first mover for the broader East Waneroo district. We've prepared the local structure plan, which is entirely consistent with the big structure plan. And we look forward to the consideration of that in the near future. We appreciate your consideration of recommendation three point one to transfer precinct date from urban deferred to urban under the MRS and the concurrent local scheme amendment. And we fully support this recommendation. I'll now hand over to Rod to talk through the technical aspects.
Okay, thanks. Next slide, please. I won't take you through the same comments. A lot of these elements are consistent to seven, eight, fifteen, of course. So in the interest of time, I guess I just want to reiterate the point that not only is I identified subject to a lot of detailed planning, but is frontal, as Rod just alluded to. It's an orderly, logical extension of this one root bankshire grove area and certainly identified as part of stage one within the strict structure plan. Next slide, please. Generally lies to the north of Lake Marigina. And as you can see there, there's some fragmentation, but as Rod alluded to, there's been a lot of collaboration amongst the landowner groups and in fact landowner consolidation through this process. Precinct represents about a hundred and sixty hectares of the overall, so about thirty two percent of the four ninety six subjects are lifting today. Next slide, please. So you can see the intended local structure plan, that's the concept that sits with it. Very much respects, reflects the East Waneroo District structure plan and again gives us a significant amount of planning certainty to want not only urban zoning, but local schemes. It'll provide for about two thousand five hundred lots. Next slide, please. So with that said, we seek your support to the recommendation today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your deputation, Andrew.
I thank you through the chair, probably for you, Rod, and it's probably in relation to both your clients. What's the anticipated number of lots that could be delivered in timeframe? What's the word for it for both his very own queue?
So precinct eight's about two and a half thousand lots. Precinct seven is somewhat similar, slightly more. My hesitation is just simply ultimately it will be influenced by the individual developer interests. What we can say is that we have three key parties within precinct eight and similarly through a forum in precinct seven that wish to proceed immediately. There's a lot of hard work going in over the last two to three years to get us to where we are now with lifting and local structure plan. So work's already been done at a subdivision level, including liaison and servicing agencies to bring those areas on.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Just wondering if there's any rural legacy land uses that exist that may impede that or any other thing that might prevent or get in the way of development occurring from your perspective.
I'd probably use the word staging, so not getting the way of. There are, obviously we know market gardens and other uses out throughout East Waneroo. The structure plan's being required to speak to the orderly and proper staging and management of interface with those uses for the most part within the precincts we're dealing with. Those types of uses are already transitioning. East Waneroo's been a long time coming. So a lot of the landowners are already either selling out or working with proponents to transition.
Anything further, Commissioner Hall? Members, anything? Thank you very much for your deputation today.
Deputation this morning also on items one in relation to precinct fifteen, we're welcoming Damian Shepard, Cole Dutton and Cassie.
Hey, thanks very much. My name's Cole Dutton, General Manager for Stockland here in WA. Damian Shepard, Development Director, been heavily involved in this site since twenty twenty one. And also Casha Betta, who is our Chief Planner from the CDP. I think we've got Shane McSweaty on the line as well. That's been key to the whole application. Stockland celebrating its seventy third year. And there's only one key party involved in this application for us. It's Stockland. We are really supportive of the recommendations being put forward. We've been talking prior to the acquiring twenty twenty one, we've been talking to the Squasini family for quite a while. And it's good to see to get this point. It's a really pivotal point. I think we acknowledge all the work that's been done, both from the minister level, the working groups, the committees and everything in regard to land supply generally. But certainly this is obviously a more difficult one across the board and the work's been fantastic. I'd like to acknowledge Anthony Mascara particularly and also Matt Selby that's helped draw it to today. Cell fifteen, as was mentioned, is partial for us. It opens up the first sixteen hundred and eighty five lots, including for us a land lease community, which will be our fourth land lease community, which is a downside of the product, a community within a community which will be creating. It gives us immediately at least four years supply, which we will launch into straight away. We have an earthwork stockpiling approval already through the city. We have a subdivision about to be approved hopefully and we have N A S P going to SBC in late July. So we're all set to go. In addition to the, obviously the housing crisis and housing supply, cell fifteen really has some community facilities that this opens the door to. It's self fifteen thirty one percent open space. It includes wetlands, vegetation, regional open space. It includes a neighborhood, county centre, two primary schools and a high school. So it's a really key, given size of the ownership, it's a really key cell with the one ownership, a really key cell to bring on and we can't wait to get into it. So we seek your support and any questions, any tech questions or anything, Casha and Damian and Shane are here. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Cole. Members, younger than.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the deputation. Similar question to the previous deputation. When do you think you'll be able to start to deliver lots on the site? Was your time.
We're turning, all going well. We'll be turning dirt next week. With the subdivision I mentioned is a hundred and eighty, thirty lots. We'll expect to sell that in twelve months. Our titles, our first titles at this point should be around March or next year. We'll be working towards two hundred a year, I think in the first instance. On what I've concerned, I still do as well.
Thank you. And just one last question through the chair. Do you have any constraints regarding servicing?
Not initially. So Water Corp have confirmed there's eight hundred lot that in the existing network for cell fifteen. They'll be on site. Pump station will need to build with the pressure main, the ranch road. And then other than that, waters include Viro ready to go for the first number of lots as well as power. Western power have confirmed through Dipsat, there's power for at least the first three stages, circa two hundred lots and then potentially more capacity beyond that as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much for your deputation. Our deputations verbal foot of the day and we have not received any written deputations. So we can now move on to considering the two non-essential items. So that takes us to the first item, which is the item we've just received the deputations on three point one, the lifting of urban deferment in East Waneroo District Structure Plan area, precinct seven, eight and part of fifteen for determination. And I welcome Anthony Mascara and Glenn Cofe to the table. Thank you. Christine, thank you, Christine. Anthony must to hear some feedback today. Anything to add to the report or based on deputations that have been presented to the commission?
Probably nothing further to add that's been today and that's already invited through the report.
Thank you. Commission members, questions?
I do, but I think I can finish.
Potential. Okay, well then we would have to go behind.
That's okay, sorry.
Before we do that, are there any questions that can be asked in the public realm? Anthony, I just wanted to ask if there has been any update in relation to the Water Corps taking on the management of the water management system. There is reference to this in the report and I understand that there has been some progress.
Through the chair, there has been a recent decision to transfer the ownership of that matter to the Water Corporation. That's a very recent decision and it's a significant decision for the drainage and regional drainage matters relating to the site. So that is a significant.
Yeah, so just highlighting that that next step is not, this is so new, it's not mentioned in the report, but that has now occurred and there has been sign off.
Correct, correct. There'll be further work that's required to refine all the requirements and the allegations that are required for the entire area and that will come as part of the side. That is really recent, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Members, any other open questions? Look, I will have to ask then that we convene a confidential session for confidential questions. So if those deputation parties and members of the public, if you couldn't mind, will call you back in as I've finished and you'll convene the open meeting. We'll just need to ask for a move and second that we close the meeting through the public while we can, while we have confidential question. Asked and moved by Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Sandry. Any dissent? Thank you. That is carried. Thank you very much, everyone. We just had a confidential break in the meeting to, um, discuss some confidential questions. And we are still dealing with item three point one, the lifting of urban deferment for East Wanneroo District Structure Plan precinct seven, eight and part of fifteen. Um, so we're back at the meeting. Thank you, everyone, um, for stepping out while that occurred. And Commissioner Hall, I understand you have a question.
Thanks, Chair. Um, previously I asked about, um, any potential rural, uh, legacy uses that might impact on urban development. So I'm just keen to hear from the department staff, uh, in, in answering the same question, please.
Yeah, I can respond to that matter. So we are aware that there are, so East Wanneroo has a number of cultural land uses that, that have existed a few times. Um, some of those land uses still remain, the market gardens and, um, um, there's a poultry farm which is, uh, within one of the precincts that affects the site, which is now, there's a commitment for that to be closed, so that buffer falls away. Um, and there are, um, other, we're aware of, uh, owners and market gardens that are looking for a decision for, they, in terms of, uh, the future of their, their operations and the closure of their operations. However, it doesn't stop the fact that if, uh, any, for example, market, market gardens that exist within the site or surrounding the site, uh, buffers need to be respected and they need to be planned for as part of the, the structure planning of the site. So the, uh, in terms of the structure planning, the, um, the department would be looking at our policies that provide guidance on setbacks, um, buffers and also any potential in that. Um, staging and timing is probably important in terms of any area that goes to urban, in terms of staging, um, development, uh, within those areas. And also the Department of Health has been, um, very helpful in that space in terms of one of their own policies provides for a reduction in market garden buffers down to forty metres, which is unhurt, which is quite, um, common in terms of the metropolitan area. So that can be reduced down with vegetated buffers. So there are a range of land use responses and mitigation strategies that the commission can consider and also the department would look at as part of any local structure plan. But we are aware of them and of course they have to be prepared for, um, any existing, uh, buffers that remain there and need to be provided for. And that's, that's been looked at as part of the next stage of the planning process.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall, anything further?
So just to confirm, um, thank you. It was a great response. Just, just confirm that the proponents are aware and there's been discussions that have confirmed that. So that general understanding is out there.
Uh, through the chair, yes. Um, this is one of the main issues that we've, uh, been looking at through the local structure planning process. And we're certainly liaising with the proponents at the moment about what provisions need to be included in the local structure plans to deal with, with buffers, particularly for market gardens in precincts seven and eight.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, members, any further questions? Thank you very much. Then we can move to consideration of the item. So can I please have a mover and seconder for the item? Moved by Commissioner Lakey, seconded by Commissioner Shears. Commissioner Lakey, any comments?
Oh, look, I think, I think, Chair, I think there's been a lot of discussion about it. I think this is, um, very timely. Um, which has been on the cards for a, for a long time. And this has been on the cards for a long time. And I think this lifting of deferment to urban is, is a part of orderly planning, actually deliver more development in that area. So I'm very happy to support the recommendation.
Commissioner Shiz, any com-? Commissioners, anything to add?
Look, I just did want to make the point that I think it is really important to note that this is stage one. And that is going ahead of that outstanding hydrological investigations on the wider DSP area. And the, and the revised boundary has responded in consideration to that. Very important step forward, which we did note through questions, is that the Water Corporation has now obtained state government agreement to be nominated as the drainage service provider moving forward and now can conduct their investigation work around what that suitable water management scheme will be for the broader DSP, for that longer term land supply. So I think this is a project that continues to move forward and this is another important step in providing that land supply. I think that Rod, you raised that this was a short term, 2015 to 2030 in terms of the north west sub regional framework. But I think, you know, we are working through the complexities now and we're, we're making tracks and getting closer. So I'd like to thank everyone for their work involved in getting to this stage and next we'll be looking at the local structure plan. So thank you all. Any further comments? Any dissent? I've declared the item carried. Thank you.
So then we will move now on to item 3.2, state design review manual, the local government design review panel manual. And we're joined by Melinda Payne at Rainville. Welcome to the meeting. Is there anything that you wish to add or are you happy to go straight to questions?
Happy to go straight to.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions for Tim or Melinda? Yes.
Yes, sorry, Commissioner Bennett. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask in relation to the excluded items from design review. And we've had some discussions through the working group process in the past around local development plans and precinct structure plans. So planning instruments rather than development applications and them being subject to design review. The conversations at the working group in the past have been that they're most likely not being presented or meet the criteria to be presented for a full panel. I had a look through the document and I couldn't see reference to that in here. I mean, I think maybe earlier versions had, but just appreciate your comments, Tim and Melinda.
Yeah, so the, thank you, Commissioner Bennett. So the the planning instruments piece was certainly something that was raised through the consultations, being something that local governments were interested in getting back on. And through the process, what we've identified is that probably sits better under design advice rather than design review. So we have actually captured that on page eight in the manual, in the local government design review manual, which is, which basically says, design advice may be especially helpful in the development of guidelines, local planning policies or standard and precinct structure plans. So really taking it out of the design review place, sort of in the design advice phase. So, yeah, it was in and out of the document and source of discussion through the, through the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Just in the recommendation refers, number six refers to further review following 12 months of operation. I, I'm just keen to understand what that looks like, how do stakeholders provide feedback? Will it be open following 12 months or throughout the process? What does it actually look like?
Great, Chair. We haven't, we haven't decided a, a final format of what that looks like exactly. I think it would be based on what sort of feedback we're getting, might be influence what sort of approach we take to that. So, yeah, I don't think there's a, a formal idea of exactly what that might look like. It would be more responsive. Yeah, but potentially we could be bringing it back to the commission in 12 months to, to relook at that. We're, we're also looking at other improvements across the design review space. And so that may, it may come up naturally as part of that as well.
And just one more, one more question if I may, Chair. Can I just confirm that through what's being recommended, that it's not going to mandate this for local governments? There's still the opt-in or voluntary decision to make if they wish to participate in the local design review panel?
Oh, so just I understand, is this from a proponents side to, or are you saying, sorry, I'm not sure if I follow.
So my question is just trying to clarify, is this going, are you expecting all local governments to adopt this approach or is it an opt-in approach?
Yeah, so it is, it is a guidance document. So it is, is a best practice manual essentially. So there is a, it's not a requirement to be followed, but it's best practice and, and certainly the intent is to bring about that consistency. So the more take up, the happier we will be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Heron.
Thank you. And related to that, I suppose I was just wanting to understand the positioning or communication intentions to local government around the manual and, and how that was intended to be managed. Pardon me. And the second part is in terms of the capturing of feedback. I, I'm mindful that in order to actually get effective feedback, just waiting for the loudest may not balance perspective, whether there is some consideration as to how we capture a good cross section of feedback from both proponents as well as obviously operations.
Yeah, so in the development of the process, we, we did go out for consultations, you're aware. And so we have some pretty strong lines of communication with local government, across the state and also with Walgo. So the Walgo team have been particularly instrumental in, in on feedback and some guidance for us. So the intention will be to retain a strong passion with Walgo specifically. But we do have a communications plan that will offer opportunity for us to provide feedback and a point, source point that as well.
Yeah, just, I, I think it's, it's important that, again, local government perspective in terms of its operations would be obviously an important component. I suppose what I'm trying to get at is that, could you give consideration to how you might be able to capture some feedback from proponents who are going through the process? And just in order to make sure that that, that given some consideration in the review process as well.
Yes, certainly, pre-chair. We've, they've not been trying to have feedback so far. So certainly the government architect hears lots of feedback regularly. But we can, we can look at seeing if there can be a overall structure around that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioners, any further questions? We'll then move to consideration of the items. There is a mover and secondor for the recommendations, moved by Commissioner Bennett, led by Commissioner Heron. Commissioner Bennett, do you want to speak to the item? Anything for, oh, no. Any comments, Commissioners?
Look, just to say that, that this is a body of work that has been undertaken to really bring some consistency to design and to set some expectations so that people working through this process have an understanding of what's involved and what scale of development expecting to see go through design review. Obviously, it's something that we greatly value at the commission and we see the benefit of design review ourselves through our significant development pathway. But we also understand that there is some developments that really are not meeting the threshold to really require design review. So we have enhanced guidelines to local government and we are hoping that that will provide a bit more consistency across design review. That guidance extends to our own selves and how we deal with that at the state level as well. So I think that this is an attempt to create that more consistent approach in design review, provide some more accountability, give those entering into design review a greater sense of what timelines they can expect in terms of reporting back. So that this actually is more of a streamlined process that can help get that housing delivery and development delivery happening. So that was the intent and we hope that local governments will take this guidance on board. Supplemented, of course, through the government architects training, which seemed to also be provided to give that additional support in design review. Any further comments? Thank you very much. Any dissent to the item? That's carried. Thank you.
So they were our two non-confidential items for today's meeting. So we will now need to move to deal with confidential items. And I will ask for a mover and secondor that we move behind closed doors for confidential deliberation. Moved by Commissioner Hall, moved by Commissioner Shiz.